Okay, let's call this meeting the Hayesville Planning Commission to order. First item of business is a roll call.
Lud.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Azir.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Atkins.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
As the record shows, Ranky showed up at seven, six o'clock. It's just seconds after Christopher Roll called us. Okay, call him.
You made it.
Item three, presentation and approval of minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I think a motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any extensions?
One.
Item four, under new business, public hearing for zone change from light commercial to SF and SF two TF. Is that applicant in the room?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, staff want to present that? Me to open it? Script first?
Yes.
To protect the rights of all parties involved and in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision. A copy is available by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. We now formally open in public hearing to consider their proposed zone change from LC light commercial and SF single-family residential to TF two family residential for property located at lots one through three, block C, Reserve A, south hundred and six feet, lot three, block B, east half, lot five, lot six, and south half, lot seven, block A of Country Plaza Villas addition to Hayesville. Do any members of the planning commission have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No.
Any members receive any written or electronic communication on this matter?
No.
No.
Other than the stuff received from the city of Hayesville, being a property owner.
Staff, please present.
Good evening. Before you use the staff report for the zone change from light commercial and single-family residential to two-family residential of lots one, two, and three of block C, Reserve A, south one hundred and six feet of lot three, block B, the east half of lot five, lot six, and the south half of lot seven, block A, of the Country Plaza Villas addition to Hayesville. The properties are located north of Grand Avenue and east of Plaza Drive. The properties will need to be replatted. The Hayesville Land Use Plan proposed changes and identifies the properties as neighborhood mixed use. Comments from area residents are in the staff report for you to read. Staff is recommending approval of the zone change from light commercial and single-family residential to two-family residential. The agent for the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Any commissioning members have questions for staff?
I just have one question about the lots one through three. They're split on the county website, so I didn't know if it needed to be included, east half, west half.
It'll have to be replatted.
Okay.
In that process.
Any other questions for staff? Or the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Rebecca Amelius with PEC, three oh three, South Topeka in Wichita, agent for the applicant. And one point of clarification before you this evening, you'll notice in your staff report, there was a correspondence from a Mr. Riley's address of seven zero four one Shaheen, Shaheen Street, inquiring on why his property was included. It was recently discovered by the development team that that property was sold a few years ago, and the deed was never filed. It sounds like he recently found the deed and will be filing it. So that property is requested to be removed from this zone change. If you are to approve this this evening, we would provide the revised legal description for the city council approval of that zoning ordinance. So that would be just to clarify the removal of the south half of lot seven of the addition. Other than that, we're in agreement with staff comment. I apologize. I was having some very significant technology issues today and was unable to bring prints of the concept. Just for clarity to you all, as Jonathan mentioned, this property will be replatted into duplex lots. Right now, we're approximating fifteen new residential lots on the south side of Chapman Street that would have a new street kind of bisecting the property that would allow access to the new street for those residential lots. Obviously, adequate detention would be required and would be done during the plating process as well, and new infrastructure, water and sewer would all be extended as a part of the plating process. The applicant will be pursuing that relatively quickly pending the results of this hearing tonight. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have about the zone change or that clarification, and I really appreciate your time tonight.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I drove by there, and it looks to me like lot one and three on the south side of Chapman already have structures on it.
There are some mobile homes that are there and will be moved at the time of construction if this project moves forward.
Look like there are still living in one of them.
That's a, I would have to defer that to the owner of the property, that they'll be making arrangements in the future for those relocations. I'm not aware of any discussions at this time between the owner and those tenants.
I could be wrong.
I could be wrong. It happens often.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Does any member of the public wish to speak? Have you filled out a card?
I did not, sir, and I apologize.
Where's the card?
So just go ahead and state your name and address here at the podium, and then anybody else that wants to speak on this issue, if you would, please fill out a card.
Also, in the script I'm going to read, you have five minutes. If you are presenting good factual information this time, maybe extended by vote, please state your name and address before addressing.
Edwin R. Hill, seventy fifty Plaza Drug. My first comment is, you know, I don't mind anybody making a dollar or whatever else. That's what our country is built on. But I do just happen to have a couple of questions here, in fact, about eight of them. Is there, I'm kind of assuming by the talk, is there a plat map right now available?
No, that will be the next thing that they produce if this is.
Okay, they would produce a plat map, okay. Now, does this TF, does this allow for two-story structures?
Will you move the papers off the mic?
Oh, sorry.
You're okay. There you go. Thank you.
That's what happens when you get older. Okay, does this TF, does it allow for two-story construction just like is going on down the street, or is it a one-story? Can he put two-story up, or can he put one-story?
Rebecca, do you know what the plan is? I believe the height restriction is forty-five.
The zoning allows two-story. The developer is not anticipating two-story at this time. They're planning on a one-story structure. So just a duplex, single-story, not.
Okay, cool.
But it is allowed up to forty.
Okay.
Sir, we're not picking that up on the microphone. It's not going to be getting in the record. If you have more questions.
Number three, will this development affect, perchance, the taxes on the current homeowners in any way?
Do you want me to answer that, or would you like to?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, no. The answer to that is no, because the current city system is able to handle new development, and any infrastructure required to serve this development would be paid for by those future property owners.
Okay, that was one of my next, one of my next questions, the sewer and water. I know they're going to extend it, but is there enough there to?
There is. There's adequate capacity in the system. We will continue to coordinate with the Hayesville staff for that, and again, all of those costs are then passed on to the future property owners. But no, no property owners existing will be impacted in a financial way by this change.
Okay, cool. I also noted that there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment coming into that area. And so I've looked at the other development on to the west. The side of the road, if you have turbine gutter, it's not so much of a problem, but when you have just straight asphalt at the end, you drive a big truck with a high loader on it, and eventually, it's going to crack the edges. So, again, the people in the development, is that all going to be taken care of by the developer?
So impacts to the existing infrastructure, if the pavement were to deteriorate, that would have to be coordinated with the city if they were wanting to make that a requirement of the developer to fix the street or any of those things. That would have to be requested. Traditionally, no. Existing infrastructure is going to be maintained by the city at large.
Okay, so not, excuse, not a cost to the homeowner?
No, sir.
Okay, on this thing, will there be any street parking? I mean, will it be allowed that it's only a two-lane road? I don't have any problems with it, but it.
So part of zoning with the zoning district that it's going to has requirement parking for each duplex, depending on what they put in. So part of zoning requires parking for the type of structure, the, if it's a house, they have so many, and there's either off-street or on-street, depends on what they are providing. There is a number that they have to meet.
Okay. Also, in this development, do you anticipate any street lighting or anything like that? Do you know?
That'll be part of the plating when they come back.
When they come in with the plat, that will be part of?
Yeah, plating usually shows lighting on it that goes through everging, and at that time in the streets, lighting will come at that point.
Cool. Also, are these units going to be, or do we know, are they going to be owner-occupied or rentals?
I don't have the answer to that, but I can find out and let you know.
That'd be great. I appreciate it. And my only last concern, and it doesn't concern me, because I don't get up early, and I don't leave early, but if you put that many in there, you're going to have that traffic backed up right there at that road that comes on the grand. So I'm just wondering about traffic accidents that might take place, because you'll double, if what I understand from here, you'll probably double the number of people in there. And at eight o'clock or seven o'clock, or when the younger people go to work, there's going to be a lot of traffic on that road, and there's going to be a lot of backup right there. I'm just stating that as something to throw out there, that there's nothing but that one entrance there. And so there's potential for some accidents. I don't know what you could do about it, really, by looking at it, but anyway, it was just kind of a concern I just would like to express.
They are proposing those to be rental properties.
Rental properties.
For everybody to have the answer.
I don't have any problems. I was just wondering.
So, hold on. How many units total?
Estimated is thirty.
So if you have two people.
Fifteen, fifteen lots, approximately fifteen lots, two units per lot.
Thirty DUs.
Thirty DU.
So, single-family would be nine point eight trips per day. I believe duplex is a little bit less, at eight point seven.
Traditionally, the traffic requirement is addressed at the time of plating. So if there's concern from staff, I'm not going to.
Yeah, that will be reviewed.
Reviewed at the time of plating. Mr. Chairperson is the traffic engineer, but just to save him some mental math right now.
Yeah, so total throughout the day is an extra two hundred and sixty-one trips. What we generally consider for A and P and peak is the top ten percent of that, so twenty-six trips, and a trip is in and out. So potentially, you're looking at twelve to fifteen vehicles extra at that intersection in the morning and the evening?
No, I was just wondering, because if you had a duplex or whatever else, and you could have two people within that family, and each one of them have cars.
Yeah.
And so you're actually saying it's sixty cars out there rather than.
No, that's what I'm saying, is the total trips would be more like fifteen in the morning, actual vehicles. For a standard, single-family home, that's actually ten trips during the peak hour.
Okay, I'll roll with that. All righty, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Any other member of the public wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Sharon Powell, and my husband and I live at seventy forty-four Shaheen. Anyway, I just have another question. It seems like everything's been answered. A lot of them is, it'll be on the plat, on the plat. Will the public, will we be able to review the plat once it's submitted and have input before the plat is finalized?
So that will come through this body as well?
That's what I'm asking. Will we have a notice when that comes in, so that way we can come to the meeting?
So Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. It is posted out through the webpage and social media and everything. There will not be a notice sent to you directly for the plat. You would have to either call and inquire when it's going to be on the agenda, or watch the webpage for when it comes up on the agendas.
So if we do come to that meeting when it is presented, we will be able to speak and make, and have questions about it?
You can fill out a comment card, and for a citizen to be heard and have, you could speak at that time.
Well, I'm asking because I'm a retired realtor and have worked in developments, and so that's why I was wanting to know at what point can we make comment on this in case we want to make changes or whatever.
Yeah, it would be when the plat process comes here to the Planning Commission. You could fill out a card and speak during that time, either under citizens to be heard or off-agenda citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, are you next?
I'm Greg Riley. I am the one at lot seven that has south half. I own it. There was a problem they was talking about. I've been there thirty years, and I do have some problems with this coming to the neighborhood. I'm curious about it. You say we're going to have this many duplexes in there. Are they section eight? You can't tell that yet?
No, sir. They're not intended to be.
I mean, it can make a lot of difference on what comes to the neighborhood, and I think it's a lot of new traffic. We've paid all our dues for living there, got the streets put in, and then all these people to show up at the last, are they going to help pay for all that that we already paid for?
No, they're paying for their own streets.
Yeah, but they were going to be using ours just to get there. You know, I'm just curious about it. I don't know that I like the idea, but they didn't ask me.
Anybody else want to speak?
So at this next thing, will we be able to stop it if we need to, or?
Will you please state your name and address?
Stop time list, seventy twenty, for Plaza Drive. So at the next meeting, can we stop it? I mean, this is all new to us. We don't know what to think. Take some time to digest it, whatever.
So, go ahead.
We're considering the zone change tonight. So if you have concerns about it, and.
Well, I don't think we should do anything unless we see a sketch, something. I mean, we don't even know what we're looking at yet.
The sketch doesn't matter. What we're talking about is taking that ground and allowing duplexes instead of single-family.
Well, I'd like to see what they are first, and I'd say no.
What we're talking about is just the ground itself.
Yeah.
And the configuration and the density.
Why would, why, how can you guys vote on a plan? You don't even know what the plan is yet.
Because we're voting on the land use. They want to use that ground for two-family duplexes.
Yeah.
And that's what we're considering. The plan and the court and the plat and all of that stuff is in the future, and they don't have to necessarily do anything that they say for configuration that they're talking about now. What we're considering is only, do we want to allow duplexes on this area of lots?
Currently, the property is owned light commercial, so this is actually going from a higher intensity.
Oh, it's better, because you guys don't really know what, you know, light and desolate is, to be honest with you, because, you know, the luxury landscape terrorizes us over there, and you guys don't do nothing about it. So, yes, this is actually an improvement, to be honest with you. But I don't want those section eights. I don't want, you know, degrade the neighborhood anymore. You know, if you just had little single houses there, that could be a better place to live, you know?
Okay.
And if I don't see the plan, I mean, how can I agree with them?
At this point, the plan isn't what we're considering. We're just considering whether or not we would like to allow duplexes on those lots.
Well, it keeps you from railroading it through later.
We're going to have a plating process. If you can come to that.
Tell me exactly what that means, exactly.
They present a sketch plat. We look at it, make comments. You, by virtue of these meetings, can come to those and look at that plat, look at it on the website. If you have concerns with it, you can address it to city staff or come to this meeting and address it here.
And then the changes can be made at that point?
Yes.
When they submit that plat, it has to conform to our city regulations. So there's subdivision regulations that they have to conform to that are already set by regulations in city code.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Anybody else? Does the applicant wish to rebut anything?
No, but I would like to just add a point of clarification, and you started to hit on it. The property south of Chapman is currently zoned commercial. So if the right party was interested today, they could go put a quick trip on that corner, which would, in my opinion, if I was a resident to the north, be a detriment to my neighborhood more than some duplexes, some more single, or some more residential development. That being said, that hasn't happened, right? As staff report states, this property's been vacant for quite some time, and so what we're trying to do is to bring new rooftops. New rooftops help support businesses. Our goal here is to see some positive traction happening in Hayesville and in particular, in this location. So we would just request that you take that into consideration. I do recognize the property to the north is owned single-family, so those three tracks, two legal tracks are now going to be zoned a little bit more, with a little bit more flexibility, right, for the opportunity to allow single-family or two-family dwellings. But a majority of this rezone request is to actually, to downgrade that and make that a residential property, residential purpose rather than a commercial purpose. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but that would be the only thing I would just request you consider from what you're hearing from the neighbors. Thank you.
Public conference now closed for commission action. The floor is open. Commissioners comments regarding the following criteria. I'm not going to read those to you. You can read them yourself. Any other questions or general discussion? If there's no questions, then I would entertain a motion.
I would move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the zone change request from light commercial and single-family residential to two-family residential for property located at lots one through three, block C, Reserve A, south one oh six, foot lot three, block B, E, half lot five.
East half lot five.
And lot six, block A of Country Plaza Villas addition to Hayesville.
Hold on.
With the exception of the north, the south half of lot seven.
This needs to be excluded. Which is?
The south half of lot seven. The south. This. Needs to be excluded.
Okay.
Our motion did not include that lot.
The south half of lot seven?
Yeah, it did not.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Sorry. Yep, you're good.
Okay, I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? I abstain. Thank you, everybody. Under all business, we have a review of zone change from heavy commercial to SF lot one, block A, Shook Addition.
Good evening. The Hayesville City Council reviewed the recommendation for the property located at lot one, block A of the Shook Addition on January eighth. The city council is sending this back to the Planning Commission to review the zone change again, including allowing the applicant, Adriel Berger, and Ken Booty, the adjacent property owner, to speak. Staff will review the points brought up during the council meeting. The chair will read Mr. Booty's letter dated December eleventh. The applicant, Adriel Berger, will be allowed to speak. The adjacent property owner, Mr. Booty, will be allowed to speak, and the applicant will be allowed to rebut. The city council requested the commission review the golden factors again in light of the contents of the letter, and then have a chance for discussion before giving the recommendation. Planning Commission's options are, one, resubmit the original recommendation, giving the reasons for returning the same recommendation; two, submit a new recommendation; or, three, amend the original recommendation. If the Planning Commission fails to deliver its recommendation to the city council following the Planning Commission's next regular meeting after receipt of the city's council statement, the city council shall consider such course of inaction on the part of the Planning Commission as a resubmission of the original recommendation and proceed accordingly. Several items were brought up during the discussion at council on Monday that need clarification. Mr. Booty's letter, visit, and phone calls were documented in the staff report. These were included in the staff report and presented in the same manner as other zone changes. Twenty-one letters were sent out, and only one property took opposition of the proposed zone change. This request changes the use from a higher intensity to a lower intensity, which is a basic time of consideration of zone change request. The applicant wants to have her affairs in line for her children. She does not plan on building immediately. When this began back in twenty twenty-one, she wanted to build a garage, but the property was not platted. According to our subdivision regulations, a building permit cannot be issued for an unplatted property. An accessory structure cannot be built in the absence of a primary structure. Access to a property was designated on the western side when it was platted, which means access is through a residential neighborhood. This area was annexed into the city in many legal non-conforming uses, which were there when the property was annexed, and the use has continued, therefore, it is allowed. This includes residential use on heavy commercial lots along Broadway that are unplatted. There are also residential and commercial uses on the same lot, some of the properties that are single structure are on them, like a garage, which is allowed because they are legal non-conforming use. The zoning map shows that the property to the north and west of the proposed lot is zone residential. The property to the south and east are zone heavy commercial and have both residential and commercial use on them. The parcel to the east of the property being considered for a zone change, lot two, will remain zoned heavy commercial, and only the west parcel, lot one, is proposed to change to a single-family residential.
It's my understanding you want this read into the record? Yes, please. Dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, addressed to the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Members of the Hayesville Planning Commission, please accept my apology for not attending this very important meeting in person. My board member obligations to Derby Rec Committee require. important meeting in person. My board member obligations to Derby Rec Committee require my attendance in the same time slot. I'm the owner-operator of Air Capital Salvage at 6603 South Broadway since July 1979. We operate an environmentally respectful auto-recycling facility within the restrictions of the current HC zoning, as well as being authorized to operate the facility via nonconforming agreement, as the facility has been operated continuously since well in advance of the date of Hayesville annexation. I am respectfully requesting that the Planning Commission reject the rezoning proposal for the west portion of the parcel, commonly referred to as 6537 South Broadway, Wichita, Kansas, for the following reasons. Much of the commercial activity on the premises involves the operation of heavy equipment, including limited to bobcats, front-end loaders, forklifts, dump trucks, wreckers, and most importantly, a vehicle press commonly referred to as a car crusher. We make every attempt to operate with consideration of the neighborhood surrounding us by only operating this equipment during normal business hours, and the crusher is situated to maximize the land area between this noisy equipment and nearby residences. This is undoubtedly an unsuitable environment for residency. It's my opinion that offering a residential permit to build residences along my northern boundary will ultimately result in my property usage battle, as the operation of my business involves noise, dust, concussion, as the press is flattening motors, transmissions, and vehicle bodies, and unpleasant odors. I am proud of my forty-four-year record of being a good neighbor with no unresolved complaints, but this change in property use threatens to place us on an inevitable course of trouble. It is my understanding that the property owner simply wants to erect a garage, very much like the existing structure currently situated at the east half of the same address, and this commission has denied her request. As the adjacent property owner, I would offer absolutely no resistance to granting a nonconforming use permit, as this would be an ideal use of the land, allowing good neighbors to continue to be good neighbors. Adrielle has been a wonderful neighbor, and I hope to continue that positive relationship. Sincerely, Kenneth. And is your last name pronounced?
Booty.
Booty. Air Capital Auto LLC. So, would you like to speak and?
Yes, if I can address the board.
Yeah.
For the record, my name is Ken Booty. I've operated Air Capital Salvage at 6603 South Broadway continuously since seventy-nine. If you'll allow me a few minutes to address the zoning change request that has been reconsidered at tonight's meeting for the following reasons. Although the secretary stated at the hearing that no requests have been made for a postponement, I specifically requested a postponement from your planning and zoning administrator, which he rejected. Upon his suggestion, I detailed my concerns in a letter presented to you, and was assured that this would have the same impact as a personal appearance. Two, items two, three, five, and eight of the golden rules fall blatantly short of the standard. Three, in the public hearing on twelve fourteen, the chairman specifically asked if there are any communications regarding this proposal, and the planning and zoning administrator had indicated none, even though we had two in-depth personal discussions, and he held a written record of my concerns, which he personally agreed to read into the record. Again, I remind you of Mr. Carter's assurance that this would have the same impact as personally attending the meeting. Planning and zoning administration secretary implied to the Planning Commission that the property being considered was surrounded by single-family, when in fact, fifty percent of the boundary, south and east, is heavy commercial. The forty-two percent, forty percent to the north, is listed as heavy commercial on your land use map dated eleven fourteen of twenty-three. It is presently being used as a private pool, volleyball, and picnic area. The remaining ten percent is across the street to the west, and is the only legitimate single-family bordering the property in question. This misleading comment led Chairman Azier to state, I think it makes sense to put residential against residential, when in fact, this would create a checkerboard of land use zones, which is contrary to city code sixteen A 101B, designed to protect the boundary zones buffering between the various land uses. By that same logic presented by the chair, I think it's reasonable and fair to maintain that heavy commercial against heavy commercial makes sense. The applicant's own statements at the public hearing, I'm not in a hurry to do anything with the property. You don't want commercial in my neighborhood, that would be bad, and finally indicating that she was preparing this for the next generation with no immediate plans to build. Final point, although the planning and zoning administrator states that in his opening that the applicant desires to build a home on the property, when the applicant stated with great clarity that she has no intentions of building anything in the foreseeable future. Her stated goal is that she desires to have the option of building at some future date. The bottom line is that had she been granted a variance to build a garage in this lot, she could have avoided spending over eight thousand dollars in survey and plating expenses. Neighbors would be getting along like neighbors, and this unnecessary conflict would never have been necessary. Mrs. Berger and I have been good neighbors for the forty-four years that I have operated Air Capital Salvage. She and her husband purchased the property in question some twenty years ago as heavy commercial property. Until such time that there is a building proposal on the horizon, I see no prudent reason for the requested change. Finally, as community servants, we hold a responsibility to make decisions many times without the luxury of firsthand knowledge, so we depend on paid city staff to gather facts, allowing us to make the best possible decisions for our community. When members of the city staff take upon themselves to withhold information that is contrary to their goals, or worse yet, offer misleading information, decisions placed before you may have unintended consequences. I'm hopeful that you will utilize the opportunity placed upon you by your city council to make what you believe is the best decision for our community. Thank you for allowing me the time to present this request.
I'll stand for any questions. So, two, three, five, and seven, is that correct?
That is correct. Two, it says, are these uses suitable given the surrounding zoning and site criteria? I think blatantly the answer is no. The odors, the dust, the concussion, and the noise make an unsuitable place for a residence.
These are, these are all things you're causing.
These are things I've been causing for forty-four years, sir, and probably for forty years prior to that, running this business as a legitimate salvage operation.
And are you doing anything in your operations that is outside the area of your legal nonconforming use?
No. No, this is the way the business is.
Do you continue, will you continue to do that for the next forty-four years?
I intend to be here for a minute, yes, sir.
When we asked her at the meeting whether she had any issue with any of your operations, she said no.
Yes. No, I couldn't agree more, and she is situated behind the salvage. The positioning of her residence, the positioning of the residence at the front of my property, and residents to the north of my property are all placed as far as we humanly can from the equipment.
And the equipment that you're talking about is the crusher?
The crusher is the biggest, the biggest problem, but even running semis and tractor-trailers through and high loaders, when we drive those across the ground, the ground shakes.
And the crusher's in the center of your property?
It's to the north edge of the property. That is the furthest, furthest distance we could get from residences.
And how many times a year do you use?
This is typically a, an annual event, but can happen more frequently. We just, you know, it all depends on the market.
And you stated in your letter, you tried to do it during the workday?
We never operate outside of the realm of seven AM to five thirty PM.
And you stated also in your letter, you've tried to be a good neighbor. You going to continue to do that in the future?
Yes, yes, that is my intention. I have no problem with Adrielle. My biggest problem is, all she wanted to do was put a garage on there to park a car in, and maybe a boat. It is a simple request, and it's excellent, excellent use of the property.
And if she wants to build a house there?
Yes.
And move into that house?
Uh-huh.
She would have full awareness of your property's comings and goings, and what that's gonna be like?
I understand your point, but the point is, she has no interest in building a home there herself. This is for the next generation.
Okay, so let's play this out.
Let's do it.
Builder comes to her five years from now and offers her one point five million dollars for that lot, so he can put a spec house on it.
Sure.
She obviously says yes, because she's a bright woman, and one point five million dollars is a lot of money.
Absolutely.
Builder builds a house out there, and it's a nice cute house, maybe paints the door pink in a whimsical way, and puts it up on Zillow. Some young couple comes to see a pink door house, and they're just happy with it on the picture, and they love the pink door, and they get there, and it's next to an auto wreckage salvage yard. Don't you think what's more likely is that they're just not gonna buy that house?
No, sir. No, sir.
They're gonna buy that house?
If you, if you.
And then enter into some sort of war with you to get your land use changed somehow?
Case in point, two miles to your east, we're sitting at a river where we put up half-million-dollar homes. Everybody comes in, buys a home, because the wind is blowing out of the south when they buy the homes. Now, the wind turns to the north, and we have a battle on our hands, because, oh my God, we just built downstream from the poop land.
So?
Same thing is happening up in the north end of Wichita, North Hoover. There's a battle going on right now. We built million-dollar homes around a lake that is adjoined by a salvage yard, running a much heavier, much, much more active crusher operation than mine. He's been there for over fifty years. They would like him to move out.
Okay, so let's assume that this moron couple buys this.
Yep.
And they come to us, this body, and says, we want this auto wreckage yard shut down that's been there for forty-four years, and I've been here for one. Do you think so little of this body that we're just gonna allow that to happen?
I think the same case is going on right now in North Wichita, North Hoover, at San Lynn Iron Metal.
They would have to have an ordinance to complain against, though. Since you are running within your timeframe of operation, they would have to have a code, something in the code to complain against, against noise, against something.
And that's where the complaints are.
But if you're operating during your normal hour of operation, then there wouldn't be, as long as you're not violating something of a nuisance.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying this is exactly what's in play right now as we speak, both east of the river and north of Wichita.
Okay. So, do you have any other comments?
Any further questions? We'd looked at the golden rules. I don't think we've met, as I said, four out of eight are missing. Opposition, number eight, was absolutely ignored, and stated that there was no opposition, when there indeed was. Number five, the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, welfare is the basis for zoning. I don't think we're protecting children if we've got them playing in the backyard against an operation of this nature. Number two, can the uses allowed in the requested district be good neighbors to existing development? The answer is no. And most importantly, is in your own code.
So, your argument is, she can't develop her property the way she wants to, because you're gonna be a bad neighbor?
No, no, the argument is, she wanted to develop her property, she wanted to put a structure up on the property, and she was told she couldn't do that. Instead, we took a seventy-seven-year-old lady and said, go out and spend eight thousand dollars, roll the dice.
Okay, sir, so the, as he stated in the memo, a garage cannot be built on the property because it's not platted, which is standard across the county.
And do you think so little of this board that they can't make an exception to that?
Okay, so it's standard practice across the county that you cannot build a building without a building permit, which a building permit happens on a piece of property that is platted. She was explaining that to her, that went through us, we talked about that, so that is not the route that she went. She then went forward with moving forward with plating her property, and she wanted to do a lot split. That was at her choice, and when she gets to speak, she can talk about that.
Certainly, certainly.
Would you like to speak now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Adrielle Berger. I own the property. It's eighty, sixty-five thirty-seven South Broadway. I live at one fifteen Grover, right behind the salvage. And evidently, I misspoke about something, but yes, my daughter wanted to build a garage, just what started this. And then we thought we could if we got it platted and surveyed, and so, but she went ahead and did something else. And what I had said was, my granddaughter is interested in building a house there. Now, I've lived in my house fifty-five years, my granddaughter's been over there all her life, back and forth, and she knows where the salvage is. But they can't even consider whether they can build until they have the single-family zoning there. And no, they won't be building right away, because they have to get things in order. We'll have to see about utilities, address, and there'd just be things that need to be done. And if she, if she is ready to build in a while, we'll do that. If she isn't, then I'm not gonna sell the land out from under her right away. And, but, that's all I know.
Do you want your pictures up?
Yes, yeah, because I don't understand where he thinks all the, the, this is my neighborhood. And that's my addition right there. There's houses across from it on the north, there's houses across from it on the west. I live on that corner lot right there. The only commercial that I see is on the east side of Sunny Side, and that is where my commercial property would be. It's where the line divides it, and the front part right in line with them, and with the south agent.
She's talking about land use and not zoning code.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, just by zoning map, so you're talking about land use, so.
Right, okay.
Zoning district, so.
All right, well, those are single-family houses.
Yeah.
If you go to the next.
What George is saying is, because those are brought into the city, they are legal nonconforming uses, they're zoned as heavy commercial, but residential is on them. So, it looks like residential, but it's not what the underlying zoning is.
Along Broadway is what we're talking about, along this right-hand side of the screen. There is several places that have, so.
Yeah.
Several of these properties of, Chris, if you could bring the zoning map back up for me?
Because that, but that part would be commercial on my, on the.
On yours, yes.
On mine, yes. And it was the back part that, you know, I didn't buy this as heavy commercial. My husband.
So, here in the photo, just so everybody in the room can see, the pink over here is heavy commercial, the one with the hashtag is single-family residential. So, I just wanna make sure. Chris, you can go back to the other photos she had.
Okay. That was. And like I said, as far as I knew, and I do know that that is commercial on that end, but as far as I know, the rest of it, and it's residential, it's single families. It's not apartments, and it's not duplexes, and I think we're two blocks deep and four, four or five blocks west. That's across the street from my man, that's the corner across the street from my house.
So, the gate goes into your property, right?
Yes, that's my gate right there, and so those are houses across the street from there. I think there's three or four. And then that's on, I think it's on Sandy, but, yeah, I guess it is, yeah, that's Sandy. And that's where the, I didn't know what that was zoned there.
North of you.
Because that's where the swimming pool and the.
That's in single-family residential.
Right. But the people cross the street on it. And then this is the corner of Grover and A Street, and that's my house there on the corner of Grover, and that's the salvage on the north there. But like I said, you know, I guess it didn't get picked up, but my granddaughter is interested in building, but she's not ready, but we can't do anything till it is zoned, single-family. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
I can say that.
Sorry. I just wanna make sure before you sit down.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Let's have one general question. What's the difference between this and the seventy-three thirty-five South Broadway that backs up to Twin Pines? It has a whole bunch of residential on it. I'm just curious what the difference would be.
Where are you talking about?
The Adrian Salvage, that has the, seventy-three thirty-five South Broadway.
Oh.
It has all the Twin Pines houses backed up to it, which would be residential, right?
I don't know if there is a difference.
Okay.
Now that I know the area you're talking about. I could have Chris pull that up if you wanted to, on the zoning map.
I just thought it was interesting that, you know, those houses, that's a whole bunch of houses, residential right there, close to that one.
I can answer that, if that's of any, of any help. The back of their facility is, the back of their facility have a good two acres of buffer zone between the residential area and where they run their crusher operation.
This is off of Broadway, right, and it has the ditches, the ditches right to the south of it?
Yes.
So, the ditch was a barrier to the west?
The ditch is a barrier to the, to the north, and then they have a buffer of about two acres to the, to the west, again, to avoid those problems with, with the equipment that we run.
Is Chris pulling that up?
I believe he is.
Just south of the ditch?
Just south of Grand and Broadway.
Behind Diedrich.
Yeah.
Behind Diedrich. Behind Diedrich. So, yes, there is residential that is on each side of, off of Diedrich. I know there is a tree row there that does somewhat of a barrier. I don't know about the south side if there is much of a barrier. So you can see the houses along the south, seven, three, three, five is where that is at. The green is a drainage ditch. There is houses right across the street from there.
I thought I could think of something else if I were speaking. There is a certain amount that you can't build. I mean, you know, you have to build so far from the edges. And I don't even know which way they would run the house. They could run it, you know, the long way and be further away from that. And I'm assuming they will put up a privacy fence, but I don't ever remember hearing these or smelling it in the time I've lived there. I, I don't, yes, you're welcome.
So what she's referencing-
But, I didn't realize what they were doing either, but-
Front and side yard setbacks.
-after it's done, the semis and the flatbeds do come out his back gate and go through our neighborhood, leaving. I don't know, I don't know if they come in that way or if they come in from Broadway, but when they leave, they leave. Because I watch them to make sure they don't hit my yard as they go. It's a real bad angle from his gate. His gate's not in line with Grover, it's in line with my house.
When it was platted, there's a twenty-foot utility easement on both the north and the south side.
Okay.
That's what she's referencing.
Well, and, but when they build a house there, there's a certain amount.
Your front yard setback would most likely be off of A Street, right? Just the way that lot's situated?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, at council's request, they would like you to go through each of the points. There is comments written under there, so I would like for you to do that.
So the uses and character of the neighborhood, while this is going from heavy commercial to residential, it would be in line with the residential part of that neighborhood. Suitability for the uses to which it has been restricted, we would be moving to a less I still don't see how this is detrimental to the surrounding properties in number three. And if you're gonna continue to be a good neighbor, I don't see why that would change. The length of time that it's been vacant, I assume that's forty-plus years?
Yeah, as far as I know. This was a area, property was annexed in the city of June of nineteen ninety-nine.
Relative gain to public health, safety, and welfare. Again, residential is much better for the public health, safety, and welfare than heavy commercial.
And this also addresses the relationship between the property owner's right to use and obtain value from their property, so I just need to kind of keep that in mind, too, with that, number five.
They adopted comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan has this as heavy commercial, 'cause that's what it was?
Actually, the extensive look that we went through the land use map this last fall, we had looked at this as residential.
Okay.
A change in list to residential. And it's still on, proposed before the city council. They did table it because of this item being sent back, too.
Impact of the proposed development on community facilities, water and sewer extension, do you know anything about any of that?
Uh, that is all there available. I mean, it's across the street.
And from an impact standpoint, single-family residential would be less than heavy commercial?
Yes.
Opposition or support for neighborhood residents? This is just one of the factors to be considered and by itself is not sufficient reason to approve or deny any request.
And those comments of Mr. Booty coming in and his phone call and everything were in the staff report, so they were recorded. There was no formal request to ever table the public hearing, that he could meet it. He only asked about if there was a later meeting, so there was no request to table the meeting.
Okay.
Or we would've done that.
And you sent out twenty-one letters?
Correct, there were twenty-four properties.
Twenty-four?
Mr. Booty owns several.
Okay.
Adrielle Barker owns a couple, and I believe the, where the swimming pool and all is across the street is the owner of that property.
And finally, his recommendation, recommendation to staff. After going through that, any questions or discussion, or clarifications from anybody?
I have a question. So, for clarification, you said semis leave the, the property? Did you say large trucks leave the-
Yeah.
Okay. And they're driving into a residential area?
Mm-hmm.
And Sandy is a one-way street, is that correct?
Yeah, you can't go that way anymore. It is now, yes.
So, how do they go? Down Grover?
I don't know if they go, I don't know if they go down Grover. It seems to me like they go up A Street.
A Street?
We go, and I apologize, I don't know the name of the streets, but we follow the street to the west, 'cause it's a full width street, and whatever street, uh, street goes north out of the neighborhood, uh, it's a nice wide street, so that is the-
So that is A Street, yeah.
So that's probably Corey.
It goes in Keystone, I believe.
Probably Corey, yes.
Yes.
They go, they go back a block.
To Corey, all the way to the west.
Yes, the other streets are, they, they wind through there and that's just, uh-
So Grover to Corey?
That would make sense, yes.
Yeah, those are the two straight streets down there, that's right.
Yeah. So, yeah. So Grover is a two lane, not as wide as Corey.
Not Corey.
And I didn't hear you mention, Tim, the, the mention of the code that I had referenced, and I, and I apologize, I don't understand fully your maps or your land uses, but this is the one that comes up on your website that shows heavy commercial versus residential land use effective of, I believe, November of this year. And your, your own code references basically not making a checkerboard out of, out of these land uses, and I don't have the luxury of putting that up on the screen, but it just makes, makes very little sense to me to go in here and cut out pieces and say, "Let's make this residential versus heavy commercial."
So the map he is referencing is on the webpage and it's the land use, the old land use, then there is the proposed land use map that are both on the webpage because we were working on that this last fall, so that's why that, those are on there. What he has is the land use, which land use is just used as a tool for what you want future development to be. Um, it doesn't distinguish between zoning categories as far as commercial or industrial, and then as far as residential, it can sometimes be mixed use, which doesn't show like two-family or quadplex or single-family. So just so everybody knows, that's the differences. The zoning map is on the city GIS page as a zoning map public, and that's the one we pulled up earlier with the crosshatches that show single-family residential, and then the, uh, the pink for the heavy commercial. This right here is the proposed zone, land use map that we have reviewed. It is still on here because it is still going to council for approval.
So, so the other track is in question, too, now, is that correct, the Robie property?
No, the one to the north is already zoned residential, right?
Your, your zoning shows that. It also shows my, my entire south side of my salvage yard as being residential, which I find humorous. There's at least four hundred cars there.
So your property, that south property, was already in city limits when it was annexed in nineteen ninety-nine. I did some research on this, so that south property was already zoned, single-family residential. Well, actually would've been double A, A, what, I can't think what the term was back then. So that's why it was already hashtag as single-family residential. So, this is just the land use map, and currently the old land use map did show the area with the pool as heavy commercial on the one. It has not been that used for a long time. The land use map has not been looked at. That's why I said we did an extensive look at it this last year. We had a workshop with all of the committee, or commission, and went through all the properties, came back and had a public hearing, and this is what we are looking at now. This is the current land use map. The other, that's what you were looking at. That's not the zoning classification, it's just a tool that was used. This was a little outdated. The other map that Chris just had pulled up with the red outline on it is the proposed land use map that is before council to approve, that outlined in red, yellow is residential use.
Everybody clear?
I do have a question. Has, has there been complaints filed from the neighborhood on the business to date?
Not, the letter state, no, not.
None that I'm aware of in the, in the length of time I've been there. We've had one, one concern years and years ago when they had a truck farm next door where they were, were growing tomatoes and they thought the salvage was impacting the tomatoes. We had a K D H E out, we investigated, actually found out it was their children on their go-karts that was destroying their tomatoes. And the only other concern was, uh, mosquitoes at one point, uh, and we addressed that immediately and took care of it, so.
Any other discussion?
I have a motion to approve the request to change the zoning classification of the property located at Lot One, Block Eight of the Shook Addition to Hazewell City County, Kansas, from HC heavy commercial to SF, single-family dwelling district, based on the findings of the fact, and forward a recommendation of approval to the city council.
I'll second that.
A motion, second to recommend approval, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? No correspondence?
None.
No off-agenda?
None.
Out of me?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you, everybody.